Ethics Committee together, we get a roll call, please. Same members are still here? I forgot who was here. All right, we'll go with that. We're all here except one. Okay, I need a motion for an approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, all right. We're going right into the report and recommendation tonight. Chief Vesta has been kind enough to discuss our local ordinance revisions for cannabis possession and use. Take it away, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, what we're discussing regarding the new marijuana laws that go into effect on January 1st has nothing to do with... Has nothing to do with... Nothing to do with whether the city is going to allow dispensaries or not. That'll be a separate discussion that's coming up later in the calendar year. So as you're aware, for many state statutes, including cannabis, we've had local ordinances on the books for many, many years that allow us to have the option to not charge someone with a state offense. Usually we use it for first-time offenders, juveniles, or other situations that the officer feels it's appropriate. Minor possession amounts, things that don't rise to felony levels. And so with the new pending state law changes, Deputy Chief Fries and I tried to make sense of the 610 pages of the bill and kind of narrow that down into things that apply to us that we would like to be able to enforce local ordinances for. So what you have before you, just as a short primer, I won't go into detail on all the parts of the law, but starting January 1st, 2020, of course, the possession of up to 30 grams of marijuana, 500 milligrams of THC in infused products, or 5 grams of a cannabis concentrate are allowed to be possessed and inhaled by persons that are over 21 years of age. Some of the restrictions include that there's no smoking in a public place, and the public place is defined by the state statute. There is some questions on that that we're hoping that the trailer bill is going to clean up the language for the possession. But essentially, what we've pulled out of the law is the... What would allow us to, anyone that's under 21 years of age, all of that would still be illegal. And so we rewrote the local ordinance to accommodate all those things, also to accommodate if an adult is in violation of the new law, to still allow us to charge a local ordinance for that. The paraphernalia section of the ordinance, obviously adults would be allowed to possess certain types of drug paraphernalia, but those under 21 still would not be allowed to. So we had to write the portion of the ordinance that would allow for the over-21 possession, but not the under-21 possession. In essence, a lot of the state law treats alcohol or cannabis along the same lines as far as alcohol, as far as possession in vehicles, possession in public places, and all that stuff. So that's the basics of what you have before us tonight. You know, the ordinance is about six pages long with... That laying it out. And there's probably going to be a few questions that you have. The other major part was the cultivation of cannabis. The current state law does allow for medical marijuana patients, who are cardholders, to cultivate up to five plants in their house. There's talk that the trailer bill, there may be some changes to that, perhaps even expanding it to additional people being allowed to cultivate, but haven't heard for sure when that's going to happen. So all that being said, this would, again, allow us the local ordinance, the ability to charge with a local ordinance. The fines would be anywhere from $50 to $750, which is currently how our fine structure is set up. And then the final version of this, if council or if committee passes this, we'll come back to you in December for a final version because we don't want to pass an ordinance next week and then the trailer bill changes a few definitions or something. We'll make sure to incorporate those into the final version before there was any approval.
Mayor?
Chief, sorry I didn't ask earlier. The fines, is that basically mirror the alcohol-type fines?
Yeah, Mayor, it mirrors all of our other local ordinance offenses that range anywhere from $50 to $750. The officers on the scene have the discretion to write up to $100, and then anything beyond that becomes a mandatory court appearance in Addison Field Court, which is handled by our local city prosecutor and the judge at that. And the judge could issue up to a $750 fine. Usually it doesn't rise to that, but that's our general penalties for all of our local ordinance violations.
I think it's important that you did mention, Chief, the growing of five plants is for those holding a medical marijuana card right now. A lot of people are under the impression that they're going to have a greenhouse going in their backyard, and they'll go to jail. So it's for the medically necessities right now.
Correct.
Alderman Sismarski?
Mr. Sorrentino just stole my thunder, but the question I had is, did they say anything about... I don't know if you just said anything about edibles? What is...
Yes, so they... Let me make sure on the... On the level... They are allowed up to 500 milligrams of THC in cannabis-infused products. So let's say you had a gummy bear, a brownie, whatever it might be. That's going to be very difficult for us to... That's going to require lab testing and stuff. Yeah, yeah. But it's total possession amounts, including that.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. What does sealed mean? It has to be in a sealed container. Is that sealed like never opened? Or sealed, they just smoke a whatever and post it jar again?
Yeah, so the... When they buy it from a dispensary, it's going to come in a sealed and marked container. I think what you're going to have is kind of like the firearms went through a test case in the past is when eventually the courts ruled that a glove compartment was a sealed container. You know, you're going to run into something where... Because the law has some vagueness in it, if they don't clean it up in the trailer bill, I think you could have a chance for some vagueness there. That, you know, like I said, the initial purchases are sealed and they're marked, and you're not supposed to have it in an unsealed, untraceable container in your vehicle.
Anything else, Alderman Woods?
Next, what is the measure or definition of close proximity?
Chief, question.
That's an excellent question, and that actually came up as a... Something that they're looking to adjust in the trailer bill. You know, I would say certainly you and I are in close proximity, but us in the lobby downstairs is not in close proximity. So it's kind of like when we deal with different drug possession cases, someone that might be in close proximity to something in a vehicle. You know, certainly a passenger sometimes might be in close proximity, but if the driver is in possession solely of something, then we wouldn't consider the passenger to be in close proximity to it. So it's one of those things that becomes a... If it goes to court, it's up... Well, not even a test case, but it's going to be up to a judge to decide of, was that considered close proximity?
Scratch and sniff deal, basically. You smell it, you're too close.
I said I smell it.
Is that what you're going for next? Got one more.
Two more.
One. We got two other Aldermen here.
That's what he might ask the same question. What is the definition of a public space?
So, "public space", and I think we defined it in there as any place where a person could be reasonably expected to be observed by others. Includes all buildings owned in whole or in part, or leased, by the state or a unit of local government. Does not include a private residence unless the private residence is used to provide licensed childcare, foster care, or other similar social service care on the premises.
So within that definition, if I'm walking through the course and I'm 500 feet ahead of Deputy Chief Overdale, you really can't see me, does that count?
It's an excellent question. But that's not your private residence, too. So that's... That would probably be considered a public place that's accessible and open to the public where your backyard would be...
Right, but if there's some verbiage in there that almost goes against that definition, if I read that correctly, that's why I came up with that scenario. It isn't as clear or black and white as I thought it would be. I read it originally, it was like, okay, so public space, parks, right? Schools, we carve off schools anyway specifically. We carve off schools, we... Parks, government buildings. But we don't specifically call out, like the forest preserve and stuff like that. We almost go up to that line and walk away from it. And that's where then, within eyesight or proximity, and all those words come into play. That's why I was asking those definitions, because I see that getting to be a little challenging, if you will.
And it is challenging. I know at some of the hearings or, you know, meetings and trainings we've gone to regarding this is the definition of public place is, again, in that trailer bill, they're hoping to clean up some of that language because if you can be observed by others, does your backyard apply? Certainly, we're not going to spend... Like you said, we're going to treat it similar to alcohol violations. And that's what they've recommended. Was the intent of the legislature was... It was even part of the discussion. So we would never go into someone's private residence for them legally possessing alcohol. We would take a similar stance with cannabis. Thank you, I guess I'm getting shut down.
Alderman Messina?
Apparently there's other Aldermen up there.
Dr. Phil took some of my questions, so thanks for that. Just like alcohol, there's breathalyzers, right? So you mentioned that, I think you started to touch on this, 500 milligrams of cannabis-infused products. Is there a technology or something out there today that could actually measure that onsite?
Chief?
No, there's nothing that can measure it onsite. So you would have to, you know, generally, these... A lot of these products, there's going to be infusers or processing companies that make these things. And at that point, you're going to have to rely somewhat on the packaging. If there's something that's... Essentially, it's going to have to go to the lab for final testing. But we do that now with, you know, I can tell you that we've got marijuana on the street, but even though we might do a field test that shows the presence of marijuana, we still have to send it to the state, the DuPage County Crime Lab for actual testing. So that would have to be done in this case, too.
Okay, one follow-up.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Are there going to be grants for this kind of stuff? I mean, I just... I have my own comments on the thought of how this rolled out. But, I mean, this incurred cost, like, is this on us? Are we on the hook to buy these devices, sending these things to the labs? That's just...
Chief?
So we're already on the hook for any type of DUI prosecution that requires a blood or alcohol draw. We actually have to use a private lab that costs about, I think it was about $400 for any... It might be a DUI that involves alcohol that requires a blood or urine draw. It's the same for drug-related. We have to send that to a private lab because the state lab does not do it anymore. And then we seek reimbursement during a conviction in the DUI tech fund to come back to us. So it is, it does cost. You know, some of our more significant costs and unfunded things are going to be dealing with the expungement of records. We have to go back to pretty much infinity to eliminate all certain types of drug convictions. Over the sliding scale of the number of years, we have to go back over the next four years. So that's kind of an unfunded mandate that we're going to be dealing with internally with staff to make sure we're expunging all those records.
Thank you, Chief. Just a little side note to when you talk about proximity. We're all familiar with the Christmas trees that hang in the car that smell so good. Well, they now have those in marijuana scent. So if they go up to the car and they think the driver or the people in the car are smoking weed, they'll point to the air freshener. So these guys are pretty swift. Think they turned it into something positive. Alderman Jacob, I believe your arm is almost frozen, you're next.
Yes, it is. Chief, just like, you know, driving with open alcohol in the car, someone has a bear, open bear in the car, that, I mean, they...
Bear. Panda bear?
A bear, like a...
Quagmire bear.
Grizzly?
Oh.
I mean, that's an arrestable offense. I mean, if you find somebody that they're smoking a joint in the car, will they be arrested or what?
Smokey the bear?
What is the rules on that?
Deputy Chief, take it away.
It's going to be a discretionary action on the officer's part. And in an open alcohol situation, let's say the passenger's got open alcohol in the car, we'd issue them a citation and release them at the scene unless there was something else underlying in the stop. It's going to probably be treated the same way. However, we might go a little bit further to find out if they have the proper packaging, if they have the proper amounts. And then if they don't, if they have excessive 30 grams, then we take further action there based on what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Catalano, did you have something earlier?
Yes, I did. It's just that Randy answered that, the question about, are they going to be developing something in the future as far as devices to determine if somebody's under the influence?
Chief?
Sure, yeah, there's actually some testing going on at one of the local police agencies. There's some companies that are trying to develop both saliva-based tests that can give you a quick indication of the level. And there's, I believe, a company out of Pittsburgh that's developing something that would also be a rapid test. So I think with this being spread across the country, there's a motive for a company to come up with a reliable test. And so I think you will see it happen at some point. But right now, there is no quick test. We would have to rely on the overall picture of field sobriety tests. And then eventually, if we have enough probable cause to make an arrest, then we'd have to go for a blood or urine test.
Alderman Sismarski?
Salute. There's a three-part here. One part has to do with the, I guess, finding of arms on you, the firearms. And seeing that is still just a state law. The government law says you're not allowed, you're to withdraw your Foid card. Is that still holding true? If you partake in marijuana?
Chief?
Now, from my understanding, I haven't heard that that's going to happen, but, you know, certainly if you're using a concealed carry license, you can't be under the influence of alcohol or drugs. That can result in a revocation of your concealed carry license. I think what you're seeing happen at the federal level, too, is, you know, obviously, with it still being a Schedule I federal-controlled substance, there's some issues with banking and other things that are, you know, kind of outside of our local ordinance stuff. But it's a consideration that I think you're starting to see the federal government make some changes. And even the state police with the Foid card, not necessarily if someone's legally possessing something, going after their Foid card for that.
True, I thought it was driving under the influence that was also taken in just like alcohol. Is that not true anymore?
Chief?
Yeah, definitely. It still will be, but there could be a situation of like an open container, just like we have, you could have open container of alcohol and still not be DUI. That could happen in this case, too. And I think that was the question that was being addressed before was, that would normally just be a traffic ticket. But if someone does have an open container in a car, we're going to do field sobriety tests to determine if they are intoxicated or not.
I'll get over this real quick so Mr. Woods can comment. And piggyback on Alderman Messina's, a lot of towns, if you've looked in the paper, read the news, a lot of towns are taking a backseat to this and letting it ride one year. I think the city of Wooddale should do the same to see if there are any grants or anything that comes up to help the police force or the city in keeping it under control. So, I'd say...
Mayor, you trump the Aldermen, so go ahead. Sorry, Alderman Woods.
So this past Saturday, Congressman Caston, we had a meeting with the mayors at the DuPage here as a manager's conference. And this subject came up. So there's three bills, three types of bills. One, I think, I think he said is finished. So the banks are now allowed to take the money, I believe. I'm going to, I'll get the correct information and get it to the manager so we can all have it. But one was the banks are allowed the Bank Act or something so we don't have cash sitting all over the place and barbed wires and all this other nonsense going on. And then something about investment of the money. And then the third one, which was the legalization throughout the country, which becomes a huge dilemma. Like the chief just said, they're expunging records. Are they going to start letting felons out of jail or something? It's just a lot of nonsense. This is all garbage. It's just brutal. Once I get the information, I'll make sure the manager gets it out to you guys. But just so you know what's going on at the federal level.
Welcome to prohibition, gang. We're doing what our grandfathers and grandmothers did a lot of years ago. Alderman Woods, I'm sorry, I didn't notice your arm up there. All right, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Messina?
It wasn't frozen, Mike. Yeah, it wasn't frozen yet. I want to go back to expungement. So are there limits to the expungement? If there's other underlying crimes, is there... This isn't a blank get-out-of-jail-free card?
No, so the expungement, we have to actually start next year. And it's dealing with smaller amounts, misdemeanor amounts, the under 30 grams and local ordinance charges that have, let's say, we've handled over the last, let's just say, 30 years. So in 2020, we have to make sure... And it's not just a local effort out at the county with all the record-keeping in the court system, the state and FBI fingerprint records. But next year, we have to make sure that we have expunged all of records from 2016 to 2019. The year after, we have to be back to 2013. The next year, we have to be all the way back to 2000. And by 2025, we have to have all of our records expunged, basically from the beginning of time for any cannabis arrests that were under the 30 grams and/or a local ordinance. So we, it'll be, you know, we have, we'll have, we'll probably have hundreds to thousands of cases to make sure that we're expunging and making sure there's no records of those anymore and that we're in compliance with the law. So that'll start in earnest after January 1st.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Thank you. Another thing, news that was out today. City of Chicago Aldermen have introduced a bill to decriminalize magic mushrooms, cybo-syllin. I think we all remember that from the 60s and the 70s when the government experimented with it, you know. So the weird part is this is like the next step. So now can Chicago trump the state since the state doesn't have to listen to the federal government anymore and follow any of those laws? And, you know, again, I think the mayor touched on that. This is like the Wild West now. Or maybe it was Alderman Sorrentino that said that in reference to prohibition. But, you know, where does this end? This is the slippery slope, and this is the hard thing I have. We talk about paraphernalia, and we look at how craftily the state carved out paraphernalia. So now we make it illegal for everybody to sell it except for those people selling it for things not allowed under this Marijuana Act, which are still illegal federally, you know. So that was just a comment, you don't have to answer.
No, I, listen...
I have a hard time with all of this.
Us establishing the local ordinance has nothing to do with our opinion of if it's a wise decision for the state to pass it, so... And we are starting to see mushrooms again in the area with our undercover agent. There's been definitely an increase of those in the area, too. So, but, yeah, we share some of the same concerns, but based on what the hand that was dealt to us, I just want to make sure that we have the ability to adjust our ordinance to charge local ordinance if possible. Or where appropriate, I guess.
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, thank you. So what if we don't pass this? Is there an option not to do this and just keep everything the way it is?
Chief?
Well, our current ordinance, we would have to repeal because it would be in conflict with the state law. But essentially, then, anyone we encounter...
But the state doesn't have to follow the federal government, so why do we have to follow the state?
Sure. I'll choose to follow the law. But regardless, if we choose not to add a local ordinance for this, then essentially, we would have to charge anyone with a state offense for any violation. So if we had a first-time offender that's a 19-year-old in town, they're going to get charged with a state offense as opposed to having the option to charge with a local ordinance. And, you know, we don't, we don't charge someone eight, 10 times with local ordinances. It's kind of like the retail theft ordinance. First-time offender, sometimes we decide, you know, we haven't had police contacts, they don't have a criminal history. Sometimes the local ordinance is a way to deal with a mistake that someone's made, but repeated retail thefts or use of drugs or stuff like that, we ramp it up to the next level. And so if we don't pass anything, we're just going to follow the state law and then, but then they would be facing state charges for any violations.
Thank you, Chief. Couple more. Alderman Messina?
Just wanted to do some quick math I was doing with the mayor. 30 grams, is that what there is allowable for one individual to conceal?
Yes.
Too over an ounce.
Okay, so 30 grams. So if I had a group of 15 people, we basically could sell a pound of wheat. Not sell, but we could consume a day. Theoretically, with 15, 15 times 30, quick math is 450, 453. Jesus. Okay, so I guess it goes to my question of... So you go to a party, which has way more than 15 people. You talked about upping, so the paraphernalia. I guess my main question, wanted to make that point. My main question was paraphernalia. When I was hip and cool, I knew the word. But what do you call those baggies? Are they called baggies? Like the little green bags that they go in? Is that considered paraphernalia? And it's not, so...
No, it's not.
Ziploc baggies.
Baggies, is that what it's called, baggies? So at that point, is it, like, is there a tipping point where you say this is considered distribution and this is not that? Or could I have 30 grams and have all the bags in my pocket? And either way, we split it up between the 15 of us at this party and we're selling a bag of weed? It could happen at a rave, maybe, but I don't know. Do you hear where I'm going with this?
Yeah, I guess even certainly right now, we could charge someone with distribution of small amounts if we're able to show with, you know, probable cause that they are selling to others. So this isn't going to take away any of the delivery stuff. This is basically the possession. And, you know, if there's several people at a private residence that are of age and are consuming, we're not going to, we wouldn't be taking any action in that case because it's legal now.
Yep.
Alderman Wesley, was that an arm raised?
Yes, it's, I'll make a motion to approve it.
If I hear a second?
Second.
We got a second. All right, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
He's high.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
That passes, I think. We got enough yeses? All right.
What about smokey the bear?
Smokey the bear, you okay, smokey? And by the way, the psychedelics, as they're known now, there's a ton of research out there with the mushrooms and that. They're found good medical purposes for them, especially in transition.
That's what they said about marijuana, which has brought us to this point. Because I'm okay with the medical.
Well, while we're on that, Chief, let's talk about the squad and body cameras, please. We're going to consider that, then you can bring it up at that point. Am I done? I'm so... Future meetings, I feel like I'm in the future. Future meetings. Squad and body cameras, January 9th. Any, anything else, team? Mr. Sismarski, what do you have on your mind?
Consider a concern amongst a lot of residents in the neighborhood lately about abandoned, disabled, or nonlicensed city sticker vehicles in driveways. And also no more, I'd like to make a motion, not a motion, but a... Bring it up to the city planner, city mayor, and the council, no more overnight parking in city spots. There's been a numerous amount of abandoned vehicles broke down there. They're still there to this day after talking to certain people. They're still there. Quite a few people on certain streets, which I won't name right now, parking on the grass still overnight and leaving their vehicles on the grass, which aren't allowed.
Are these items to be considered at future meetings?
Stuff for the CSOs and the chief to take to the CSOs and the code enforcement officers.
Sure, yeah. And if there are any additional specific locations, if you could pass those on to us. I know the... on to us, I know the, a couple of Inopera vehicles have been, they're currently under the 10-day notice for removal.
One or two, all right.
Yeah, so we are addressing those.
Alderman Jacob, are you-
Well, I was just going to comment, Alderman Sismarski said no park on the grass, we currently have an ordinance, you're not allowed to park on the grass, correct?
There's cars around.
Yeah, so just, if those are brought to our attention, we will address them, and with the property maintenance program, we've had substantial compliance from well over 90% of people, so we'll address those locations, definitely.
All right, hate to be a buzzkill, no pun intended, we have a motion, a second, and-
You don't have a motion or a second? Second.
I thought he made a motion. All right, let's have a motion, Eugene, say it again.
Second.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. We're adjourned. Mushrooms.
She's got medical marijuana.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to Public Works Committee, minute taker, please take note of the same council members present.
I'll make the motion, prove it, man.
Second.
For October 10th, 2019, for Public Works Committee, you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Report of recommendation, a resolution approving the purchase of the mobile vehicle lift in the amount not to exceed $44,025, that is my motion.
Second.
I have a question.
You have a question? Go ahead.
I have a question, so why don't we go the lowest bidder on this? I mean, because all the time, we go to the lowest bidder.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so there were several items that we considered with Gray Manufacturing who had the lowest bid. One of those was that they do not offer fork extensions. We use these lifts primarily for our larger plow trucks, and the fork extensions offer an added safety feature, they get further underneath the tires. Several other factors to consider, there were no local dealers for Gray Manufacturing, and no, they don't offer any kind of onsite service. This is just some of the reasons why we thought it was best to go with the sterile conic coat, although it is slightly more expensive. They have, they're produced here in Streeter, Illinois, and they have several local dealers, there's one in Orland Park and one in Chicago, I believe. Part of the issue we're having now is that inspections take weeks to plan, parts take weeks, if not months, to be delivered, and our current lifts, the parts are becoming obsolete, they're hard to find.
Okay, so what about the other one? The rotary lift?
The rotary lifts, yeah, you can see that the lesser one there is the wired version. We would prefer wireless, just because wires present a tripping factor that has to be considered, and they're susceptible to damage from equipment and tools.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, a couple things, when I was looking at these things and looking at the safety, I didn't know that we use these, but then I, once I started looking at them, like, started thinking about the loads imposed by those trucks on those lifts. Is the floor in the Public Works building rated to hold those point loads?
Go ahead.
I'm not exactly sure what the rating is on that floor, but I can definitely find that out for you.
Yeah, I would, I mean, that's something I would like to look into, or at least address.
I would imagine it's been looked into at some point in the past, but I will definitely find that out for you.
I wouldn't imagine that. You would think that, but I don't, I'm not sure. And another thing was looking at it, and I know that they're synchronized, and they talk about the safety on those things, it'll catch, that those are like an inch and three-eighths apart, but the synchronicity of it's like three-eighths of an inch, so if you're raising that thing up, those two things are kind of in conflict, the fractional difference between those two, that you could have that thing set, but never locked out, balanced. And thirdly, along with that, or comma in that question, is the floor is not level in the Public Works building, I'm assuming, right? Everything pitches to those drains? How do you set these up? It doesn't look like they have the ability to balance that out. I mean, they scare me a little bit when I'm looking at them.
Yeah, so part of the, the nice part about these is that they offer onsite training and setup, and I'm assuming that all of that is calibrated at that time to coordinate with the floor pitch and everything, like you said.
Okay, I'll spare you all the technical math that I went through to decide what those point loads were.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a comment, you know, the company I work for, I mean, we do property appraisals of buildings and equipment, and I will say, that brand is probably any bus garage that has those, and any municipality across the country, or like a school district, that's typically the brand they have. And, I mean, I see them like 10, 15 years old, and they're still seem to be working fine, and so I think the brand is a good choice.
Yeah, free endorsement.
Yeah, I'm okay with the brand, the safety is my concern.
Any other questions?
They're safe, they're used all across the country.
No other questions? We have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
We have. We have. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Okay, items to consider at future meetings, Rickard Lift Station painting, that'd be November 14th, 2019, and my favorite one is Robinson Stormwater Report for Ward 3 and 2 in November 14th, 2019. Any other?
I think it was 2 and 3.
Did I say that?
No, it says 3 and 2.
You said 3 and 2, but it should be 2 and 3, because 2 comes first.
Well, that's the way the guy-
I'm just saying.
Three seconds.
Okay.
Any other, any other items to consider? No, no other items? Go ahead.
I really, I would like an update on the ALAN projects and Punch List and where we stand with them, towards that here now with the projects.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
I was going to ask it publicly, but do we have any idea of when we're going to get grasped?
Yeah, they just talked about it.
Yeah, so tentatively, they're scheduled to be back onsite late next week, although they did already start saying that they were delayed from the rain last week, so I wouldn't be surprised if it pushes out further than that.
Thank you.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yeah, Jeff, did you, just to be proactive, did I see right, we're expecting like two inches of rain this weekend? Are we going to have sandbags ready if we need it? Tony?
Yeah, we always monitor those short-term and long-term forecasts, so if there is a need, we always have sandbags placed in strategic locations, and then also outside Public Works, and we would activate our procedures.
Okay, Mayor, you had a question, or no? Okay, any other questions? No other questions? Making a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.